Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sam Bernbaum. I am a project manager for Settlement Housing Fund, which is the lead developer for Harlem River Preservation. It is six o'clock on Thursday, May 26, 2022, and we are going to get started with this evening's town hall meeting. I just want to start by thanking all staff and of course residents for joining us today. We really appreciate it. It gives us an opportunity to share some of the things that we've been working on at the development and also of course field some questions and provide some answers that you might be looking for. So a quick note on the format for the meeting. We dropped off a printed copy of this PowerPoint presentation to every household at Harlem River Houses and the Tower. If you are listening to the audio of this presentation over your phone, you can follow along using that printed copy. We will publish a video recording of this town hall meeting on our website, which is www.harlemriver.org by the end of next week. Everyone will be muted during this presentation. We will then have a question and answer session at the end of the meeting. To ask questions, you can do that in really two ways. The first is you can type your question into the Zoom Q and A. It's possible that one of our staff will be able to answer that question in writing during the meeting by typing back to you. If we can't get to it, we will try to get to it at the end of the meeting during the Q and A session. Alternatively, you can ask your question out loud. If you are using a mobile device to listen to this meeting, in order to ask a question, you can tap the screen of your Zoom meeting. A toolbar will appear. Select Participants and then select Raise Your Hand. On a computer, move your mouse on the Zoom meeting screen. It will reveal a toolbar, click Participants, and then click Raise Hand. You can do this at any time, but we will not be answering questions until the end of the meeting, once we've gone through the slides. Our agenda for today. We are going to start by hearing from a representative from the general contractor on this job, Ellie Himmelstein. He's going to be discussing ongoing and planned construction at the development. We'll then hear from property management. They will be reviewing how to pay your rent and request maintenance if you need it. We'll then be hearing from our social service provider at the development, PSS. PSS will talk about some of their services and review some of the things that they've already been doing at the site. We'll then hear about jobs at Harlem River, an update on jobs, how to apply for them. And then finally, we'll talk a bit about the upcoming Resident Association Board election. And then lastly, as I mentioned, we will be doing a Q and A session with whatever time we have left. So I'm going to now pass it over to Ellie Himmelstein. Ellie, if you would please unmute your mic, introduce yourself and present.
Thanks, Sam, and good evening, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity to give you hopefully just a brief update on what we're doing on the construction side. Again, my name is Ellie Himmelstein. I work for River City Builders, we're the general contractor for Harlem River Preservation, the senior PM on site along with a great team who hopefully you've met a lot of them already or seen us walking around the job site. A lot of, a lot of the team I've worked with for the last 10 plus years. The developer and, and our construction company have really put together a great, a great team. So I just wanted to start off by saying thank you. We're excited to be here. We've been on site for around three and a half months now in terms of the actual construction. And like I said, hopefully you'll see us walking around. Feel free to introduce yourself, please. And let's just dive into what we're, what we're doing on site and what we have coming up. So what construction work has been done over the last few months? We have started after a lengthy development of how this scope was, is to be done in the safest manner. We've started to remove the lead paint in the vacant units across the development. Approximately 45 or so vacant units. And once we abated, removes all the lead paint through our certified contractors. And after they've been tested and cleared of the, of the lead paint, we've started the actual renovations. Hopefully, a lot of residents by now have seen the model apartment. So basically, what you've seen there is what we're doing in these vacant units and what we will be doing at all of the, all of the apartments throughout the development. We also started our, our first move, first relocation of residents to those vacant units, roughly 10 households, moves out of the J line to, to 10J or 211J. I always, I keep flopping that address, but 211, thank you, thank you. I'll, I'll get it. 211J, the residents were relocated to those vacant units by the CNC team and by SAV. Big, exciting undertaking. The residents did a great job. The team did a great job. They're, they're comfortably in those, in those new units. And we've had the ability to now go into their, into their apartments and start the lead abatement and also the, the actual renovations. In addition to that, we've started to replace the, the riser valves. So this is not as exciting as new appliances or kitchen cabinets or some of the other scope we'll talk about. But um, basically, I'm sure especially long time residents have seen that anytime there's a leak on site or anytime that there's anything, an issue related to the water lines, water service to an entire building or potentially even the entire property had to be shut down by putting in these riser valves. We're able to isolate the, the water per line. So let's say the A line into 11J, the B line, everything will have its own water, water riser, the cold lines, the hot water lines, et cetera. And that will enable us to do our repairs and leave the management company with an infrastructure that facilitates easier repairs as needed. We can jump to the next slide. And I should say that once we, once we get through the, maybe the slides are a little boring, bear with me. But we've got some photos that we also wanted to share, which are a little further. Once we get through these slides. So we've also started to work on the roof. The tenants who are residents, excuse me, who are in some of the top floors will have started to hear that, removing the old roof, which was in rough shape. I just and residents in the top floors can attest, can attest to that in terms of leaking conditions, the lack of the proper insulation. So we're roughly complete with the demolition of the existing roof at three buildings. We've put down a temporary membrane and starting, I believe it's the middle of next week, we're getting delivery of insulation and coverboard and the final roof membrane. So we're actually ahead of schedule on that, which is very exciting because we always, in general, as many needs as there are inside of the apartments, we always like to take an outside in approach. So if, if you can imagine if someone has peeling paint on their ceiling or something caused by a leak outside of the building, it's, it's kind of counterproductive to address that first before you make the building itself watertight. So we've always tried to prioritize roofs and I'm excited to report that we are, we're slightly ahead of schedule in that, in that effort. The, uh, this is, this is pretty, pretty neat. The developer has gone ahead and protected the existing sculptures, which are, which are on the property. You may have noticed those big green, green boxes. And once we're done with our construction scope, a restoration specialist will come in and restore those statues to their, to their original beauties, which is, which is exciting scope. We've also started to store construction materials and equipment. You'll see that on 153rd Street. We fenced off that area. It's now being used to store materials as well as temporary parking for some of the management and construction staff. While we have a, some construction equipment in the former NYCHA staff parking lot. And you'll see a lot of scaffolding and construction fences throughout the site. That's there for, you know, the resident's safety. There'll be, there shouldn't be any debris coming off of the building, but this is code to have the sidewalk sheds up and you know, we're, our main concern here is to do our job, but do it safely. So the sidewalk sheds are going up as well as controlled access. Can we go to the next slide, please? And I, I, I love this comment that was written and you'll see and hear us. Unfortunately, you're gonna, you're gonna hear us. The construction work that we're doing generates a lot of noise. We're trying to be as respectful as possible. You should not be hearing our workers before eight o'clock and you should not be hearing them after five. If you do, if someone is doing something that they shouldn't, which, which will happen over the course of two plus years, please let us know. Reach out to the management company, stop one of the, the, one of our team members and let us know. And I apologize in advance for the noise that we're making. It's to accomplish the scope which the building and the residents really need. But please let us know if any noise is, is bothering you and we'll, we'll certainly see what we can do to address that. But as it's noted on the slide, this is work that's being done in your apartments, in the, in the areas, in the stairwells and the common areas directly outside of the apartments, the mechanical rooms and the cellars and basically throughout the, throughout the property. The lead abatement is, is an intense scope. It's very involved. Specialized contractors coming in will show you in a few slides, some of the protection that goes up and the notices that you'll see outside 211, 211J. Thankfully, it is, it is going smoothly. And there are a lot of eyes on this to make sure that while our contractor is certified and they've done this before and they're doing the right job, the developer also has their environmental consultant looking over our shoulder to make sure we're doing it correctly. NYCHA has had several consultants visit the job to ensure that it's being done safely. So that's actually oversight. Usually you'll hear a general contractor say, you know, just let us do our thing. We know what we're doing. This is oversight that we're actually pretty excited about because this is important work. It's for the general safety of the residents. And we're happy to report that so far it's being done properly in the safest manner possible. This is, the next item that we're addressing is the, the lighting update. Thank you for your patience on this. This is something that we typically like to hit the ground running with immediately. It turned out, and I'm talking about lighting that's going to go in your common area stairwells, hallways, which will brighten up the, the hallways, make them more inviting and safer, as well as putting in emergency exit lighting. We've had a couple of challenges with some of the existing conditions in terms of finding, pardon me, the right light fixture. We finally found it. So we should be starting this scope within, I would say, a month to a month and a half. And sorry, I skipped over the, the temporary moves and renovations. This is, you know, we like to start off slowly to make sure we're not biting off more than we can chew. Make sure that everything that we've planned over the last year and a half is going to be implemented smoothly. So in consultation with CNC and with the developer, we've started off with those 10 units. Soon we'll be doing, you know, 20. And at some point, we hope to be doing as many as 30 units over the scheduled timeframe. All in an effort of delivering the quality that the residents are looking for in as quick a time manner as, as possible. Next slide. Okay, so some additional scope that we have queued up and, and we're for better or worse, we're gonna, you're gonna be seeing a lot more of us and we'll have more trades on site. The more activity means the more that's getting done and the closer we'll, we'll get the property to the finish line. So the city sidewalks are in various states of disrepair. They're tripping hazards. You have children running around, especially in the summer, bike riding. Before we move inside the property, we're going to address the, the city sidewalks around the property, which we will be starting shortly. Excited to report that on the elevators for the tower, we have the shop drawings from the contractor. They started to order the materials. They've been, the management company has a new service contract with them. So hopefully you've been seeing fewer, fewer outages, excuse me. But no question, the elevators are old, they're problematic. They need to be, you know, they need to undergo a substantial amount of work. We can go into future detail at a later time, but basically of the two elevators that are at 2850, we will take one car out of service at a time. Priority will always be given to residents for the car that's in, that's in operation. And the scope to modernize the, the car will take roughly three, three to four months per elevator. So overall, we're looking at half a year to complete the, the elevator scope at, at 2850. And I think that's back to you now, Sam, right? For the you're, you're muted, Sam.
Sorry. Thank you, Ellie. I'm happy to go through this one. Or
the one before, the slide before the last two, I think.
Oh, apologies, Ellie. Yes, apologies.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I was, I was in the process of responding to a question on the Q and A. Thank you, Ellie. So I wanted, we wanted to take a second and provide a note about the cooking gas repairs at 2850. I think everyone at 2850 certainly is aware that there was a gas outage before the, the pack, the red, the packed conversion that we took over from NYCHA. And we have been working hard to address this as quickly as possible. It is an extremely involved repair, hence how long it is taking. We want to let anyone who is a resident of 2850 on this call, we want to let you know that we are, we are actually going to be hosting a separate town hall meeting just for residents of 2850 so that we can share more information about this issue specifically, including the timing for the work to occur. We will be dropping off a notice at every apartment at 2850, likely early next week with the date, the time and the call in details. I can tell you right now that the meeting will be on June 2nd at 5:30. But we will be dropping off a notice that says when the date is, the time is, and how to access it. Again, you know, this is like a terrible, terrible issue and it is unfortunately not one that is a simple fix. But we are working as quickly as we can and we're looking forward to sharing more specific updates with you for residents of 2850 when we have that, that call. Lastly, these town hall meetings that we're doing will continue. Every quarter, we're going to be doing one and then in between, hopefully you have been receiving the monthly construction newsletters. We put those out once every four to six weeks or so with updates of what we've been doing on site, what you can expect going forward, updates from property management, contact, key contact information. Just trying to make sure that the residency at the, at the development, at the Tower and Harlem River Houses is as aware as possible about what's going on in your community. And passing it back to you, Ellie.
Okay, so um, we actually have photos of this, so I won't take up too much time walking through, because I feel like the photo says a lot more. But just a snapshot or reminder of some of the upgrades that are going to be happening in, in your collective apartments, the kitchens and the bathrooms are obviously going through a substantial renovation, basically a gut where there are essentially new walls in the kitchen. Obviously, everything is being painted, new flooring throughout the entire unit, new LED light fixtures, new stainless steel appliances, new countertops, new sinks, new speedy valves under the sinks. They're being prepped for a plumbing connection to washing machines for residents who already have one. Just a quick little plug. The development calls for three new laundry rooms, which are going to have the latest and greatest in washing machines as well as high speed dryers. They're going to be beautiful rooms. We're still working on scheduling that out, but that's an exciting amenity that we, that we're excited about, sorry, that I'll work on that delivery. But that's in your, in your, in your kitchens, in the bathrooms. New, new essentially everything, new tubs, new vanities, new medicine cabinets, tile, porcelain tile flooring. There's tub surrounds, outlets, lighting. And in the bedrooms and living rooms, I had mentioned the, the paint, we're also installing new windows as well as upgraded or complete replacement of the existing steam heating. We're going to put in heat pumps, which we've gone into a little more detail about in past meetings. But this is basically the opportunity for residents to control their heating and now have cooling. Every, every unit will have cooling. And that will be controlled by the, by the resident. New apartment entry doors with doorbells, new hardware, new security systems going in from controlled access at the, at the front entrances of every building. New doors, which will be secured with new hardware. And all residents will be getting key fobs as opposed to actual keys. And then there'll be an intercom system at every entrance to accommodate guests, deliveries, et cetera. And I guess most, most importantly, just addressing the infrastructure on the property, any plumbing leaks, obviously any roof leaks once we put in the new, the new roof. Any leaks coming from the facade, once the masonry work starts. Basically bringing this building back to the, back to where, where it should be to be a comfortable home for all of the, for all of the residents. I think next slide, now we're up to the, to the more exciting part. You get to see pictures instead of just hearing me, hearing me talk. So next slide. All right, this is a kind of self-explanatory. Danger. Basically, where we are currently doing the, the lead abatement, we have this signage up. It's for the protection of the, the workers who are going into these units as well as residents who are no longer in this building. But basically, all of the abatement is contained beyond this, beyond this door. The door is always sealed. The windows are sealed and the workers, you may or may not have seen them, are wearing full HEPA suits and it's, it's a pretty involved process. Again, to remove a, a condition on site of lead paint and return these apartments to a, a lead-free environment, which is challenging scope, but, but underway safely and something that we are very excited about. Next, next slide. So these are our, our new kitchens. So you can see on the left, this is a part, an apartment. Once the no, I'm sorry, I was going to say, once the abatement has been completed, but that's not entirely accurate. The demo has started. You see the old light fixture there at the ceiling, one of the older appliances. We've started to remove the cabinets. The, the old flooring is still in place and on the right, you have the new cabinets. This is a, a photo of installation in progress. So it's missing the hardware on the, on the base cabinets. You get a, a sense of the new stone countertops or quartz countertops, the range hood that you have right above the, right above the range for better air circulation. New stainless steel range, new flooring. They're, they're coming out really nice. And again, I, I think a lot of residents have already seen this when they visited the SAV's office or, or the model, the model apartment. Now, next slide, please. This is a bathroom, a new bathroom in progress. You have the new tub that's installed, the tub surround is in. The vanity is installed with the integrated sink. The medicine cabinet is not installed yet. You have the new toilet with the toilet seat is up. Picture would be nicer if it was down. And then there are a couple of, a couple of things that we still have to add to this apartment, but you have new electrical outlets, new light fixture. They're really, the design team really outdid themselves on, on, on these selections. And the feedback that we've gotten from the developer as well as the, the TA board, I really think that this is certainly one of the nicest finishes that I've, that I've been involved in and being able to install. So it's coming out great so far. Next slide. This is the stuff that I get more excited about than, than pictures of a kitchen, but it's, it's because of the construction work in progress. You, on the right, you see that the, that, that membrane is the vapor barrier. That's the temp roof that goes down once we've demolished all of the existing roofing. On the left, you see that they're putting all the debris from the prior, the, the existing roof onto into a large super sack, which is brought down so that debris can be removed off of, off of the site. Someone mentioned in, in the Q and A that they've seen dust coming off of the roof. I thank you for pointing that out. It's something that the management company has actually pointed out to us as well. We have them using vacuums with HEPA filters on the roof during the demo and we'll revisit this and double down on that. Because we do not want any dust coming off of the roof. Residents should not have to, should not have to be dealing with that. And then, as I mentioned a little earlier in the call, middle of this, next week rather, we'll be getting roof insulation as well as the, the finished roofing materials. So we are on very, very close to having finished roofs. Next slide, please. I think we're winding down on the, on the construction slides. On the left or on the right, you see the new finished flooring, the luxury vinyl tile that was selected on the, on the left. Not as exciting a photo, but, but one that it just shows the, the level of installation and quality that the development team is requiring. So a lot of contractors will come in and just put down the existing, the new tile, excuse me, the new flooring on the existing tile in the apartments, what the specifications and the development team is requiring is to float the floor, put down basically a new surface and then the luxury vinyl tile goes on top of that. And what, what that accomplishes is basically it provides a level surface for the new flooring to be installed and it'll mean that it'll last longer. And you won't have to have maintenance come into your apartments to address, you know, one piece of the flooring coming up or whatever, whatever it might be. So just a, an example of the, the time and the, the thoughtfulness that went into the products that were selected for the development by the developer and the design team and, you know, carrying over to the actual installation. That's it for me. I apologize for taking so much time. I'm excited to report back to you guys with hopefully a lot more work coming up. And if you see me or you see members of the team, please stop us. Don't yell at us if you're upset. Just let us, let us know what the issue is so we can work on it and address it. And thank you again for welcoming us into the property and allowing us to, to do this work. Look forward to continuing and completing as quickly and safely as, as possible. Thank, thanks.
Ellie, there's actually one more picture, by the way.
Oh. I have to say that end part again. Oh, okay. This is, this is important. Safety. I mentioned that everything that we do is driven by safety. Not to geek out over, over construction, but buildings over 15 stories, similar, basically 15 stories or over, similar to the tower, require a site safety plan and a site safety manager to be on, on the property when construction is underway. Following the recommendations again of the development team and the design team and our own past experience, we have a full-time site safety person on site for the low-rise buildings as well, even though it's not, not required. And the sidewalk sheds all filed with the DOB, reviewed by the site safety manager are going up. You know, primarily or not primarily, their sole purpose is to keep residents safe. So we've gotten a little feedback from the, or I should say, not a little, we've gotten feedback from the management company and your security team about concerns about lighting. We plan on bringing in within the next month or so additional temporary lighting to illuminate the site a little more. Being that some of the sidewalk sheds might be inadvertently blocking some of the lights on the actual building. But again, this is just, you know, one of the safety measures that we have to undertake in order to facilitate the, the construction.
Thank, thank you, Ellie.
Sure, thanks, Sam.
Sure. So we're now going to pass it over to Priscilla Porter, who is with the management team to give some reminders about how to pay rent and how to request maintenance. Priscilla, if you could unmute your mic and present.
Hi, good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be on this town hall with, with all of you. So there are three ways to pay rent. On your rent statement, you will see that there's information on sending a check or money order addressed to Harlem River Preservation, PO Box 25098, Tampa, Florida, 33622. You can also visit the management office at 231 West 151st Street, also known as the former NYCHA management office. The third way to pay your rent is visiting the website, www.clicpay.com backslash CC. Please note that if you do decide to pay your rent on the website, that fees may apply. To avoid paying fees, you can use your direct account information instead of a debit or credit card. Also, if you're choosing to come to the management office to drop off a check or a money order to pay your rent, please do so in proper time in order to please do so in proper time in order to avoid. Um, that's, excuse me, I'm sorry, Sam, can you hear me? Cause I hear an echo.
Yes, we can, we can hear you.
Thank you. Um, to avoid, um, your check or money order being delayed and being received and, and processed. Um, we have been having some issues with residents not receiving their rent statements because of the post office. Also know that you can definitely visit our management office and anyone in our office can help you with obtaining a printout of your ledger. So please don't be discouraged if you did not receive your rent statement. And the mail, come to our office and feel free to see one of our team members to obtain a copy of your ledger. And it is all the same, we'll be able to give you your account number and help you in, in that way. And always, if you have any questions regarding your rent bill, you can call us by contacting the main line at six four six four six one three zero zero seven. Option two, or you can email the team at harlemriver@ccmanagers.com. Can you go to the next slide, please? Also, if you're interested in needing assistance in requesting maintenance service, uh, CNC is responsible for all repairs at Harlem River Houses and Harlem River Two, also known as the Tower. To submit a maintenance request, please contact the main line. Always use the main line for any, any services needed. Call us at six four six four six one three zero zero seven. Option one for maintenance repairs, Monday through Friday, eight thirty a.m. to five thirty p.m. You can also email harlemriver@ccmanagers.com. For emergency maintenance during non-business hours. And so emergency maintenance being lack of heat, hot water or flooding conditions. You would also contact that same main line, which was then routed to the ma- emergency maintenance service at six four six four six one three zero zero seven. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Priscilla. We are now going to turn it over to Rodney from our social service provider, P S S, to talk a bit about P S S's ongoing services at the site, um, as well as some things that they've been doing recently. Rodney, would you please unmute your mic and present?
Um, good afternoon, residents of Harlem River Preservation. Um, my name is Rodney and I'm one of the social workers. The other social worker is on the line as well. Her name is Eileen Lopez. And, um, since we got into the side, we have been meeting with residents on, uh, daily basis, um, they can either stop by our office and they can just call us at the general number, the six four six, six four one three zero zero seven, and then press three to reach out to the, uh, P S S office. Um, if you want to schedule time to talk to us about any social service, uh, requests that you might have with your families, um, you can always like reach out to us at that number. Um, Sam, if you want, you can go to the next slide, I think. Um, our, um, we provide case cons- uh, consultation, case assistance, support for families, um, in coordinating any type of plan that you might have. Um, we are looking into providing any type of like training and tech support for residents and kids as well. Um, we are looking to implement more activities in which like the family can come and explain, um, spend times during, um, well, um, the hours, the, of the operation hours that we're gonna be in the office. Um, when it comes to like meditation exercises, um, connecting family with, uh, G D prep classes, uh, ESL classes. Um, when it comes to social support groups, emotional support groups, if you need any type of referrals for a mental health counselor, um, if you have any questions concerning, um, how to approach or navigate any type of systems like social security, you can always reach out to us. Um, Sam, if you want, you can go to the next slide. Um, so, um, here is the, um, where our office is located is two oh seven West one hundred and fifty-first Street. And our hours is nine to five. And, um, Eileen Lopez, uh, number is nine one seven six, uh, two eight eight nine nine eight, and mine is six four six three three five five eight three nine. And Sam, if you wanna go, you can go to the next one. Um, just to give you a heads up, um, April twenty-nine, we call a, uh, meeting greet. It was for us watching, uh, get to meet more residents just to see their concerns and why are the needs. Um, we actually are doing a survey, the survey is ongoing, just to make sure that we are actually reflecting any type of activities, any type of, um, case referrals or case assistance that you guys might need into the services that we provide, the, um, um, the res- um, so the complex, you guys. Um, so if you wanna fill out that survey, you can always come to the office, let us know. So we can actually reflect that into the overall planning that we're gonna be doing. The other thing too is that for the June calendar, we're gonna be distributing that calendar, um, between tomorrow and Tuesday, uh, we're gonna post it outside of the building. So you can have an idea of all of the activities that we're gonna be having on June. And you can go to the next slide, Sam.
Thanks, Rodney. We're now going to be talking a bit about, uh, job updates at Harlem River. Um, so Judy Gerena, uh, if you could please unmute your mic and present.
Thank you, Sam. Uh, good evening, everyone. So my name is Judy Gerena, I'm the compliance manager for this project. And this evening I come to you with really good news, which is that we are actively recruiting and interviewing for opportunities on the construction side at Harlem River. We've been speaking about this for quite a long time and we're excited that we finally reached the point where placements are taking place. Um, if you're interested in obtaining work on this project, I want to encourage you to apply. Uh, I'm going to provide a little bit of guidance just to make sure that your application process goes as smoothly as possible. And first, I wanna clarify that we will be prioritizing authorized Harlem River residents, which means that you need to be on the lease for your apartment at NITRA. Uh, if you are not currently on the lease, you should reach out to NITRA. It's a quick process to get you added to the lease. Uh, the second thing is that you would need an updated resume. Um, with your contact information, of course, because we wanna be able to reach you. And so if you need assistance, either creating a resume or updating your resume, reach out to NITRA Reis. They will assist you at no cost and you will have an updated resume to, uh, apply for a position. Uh, the third thing is obviously to share your resume with us. You can do this one of two ways. Uh, first is by dropping it off at the management office located at two thirty fir- two thirty-one West one fifty-first Street, or by emailing it to harlemriver@ccmanagers.com. So the address and the email address have been listed on your presentation, slide twenty-two. Um, and once we have your resume, we can reach out to you about job opportunities and possibly set up an interview for you. Uh, next slide, please. Great, so I'm gonna provide a few highlights just so that you know what you're getting into. Um, and so at Harlem River, we will be providing prevailing wage job opportunities. These will be full-time positions, uh, entry-level positions, which means you don't need a lot of experience to apply. Um, and the opportunities will be temporary, each lasting between three and four months. Um, and as I mentioned, we're actively recruiting, so if you're interested, start the process of updating your resume. If you have not already done so, ensure it with us so we can set up an interview. Uh, these positions will be across several different trades. Uh, they're listed, the full list is on your presentation, but they will include painting, flooring, landscaping and general labor. As we've mentioned, uh, you need a couple, couple things to apply. Um, and here's the full list on your presentation, slide twenty-three. Uh, you will need an OSHA forty certification, you will be, you will need proof of work authorization, a valid ID, your updated resume and to be on the lease at your Harlem River apartment. Uh, and again, reach out to NITRA, if you need assistance with that. Uh, thank you so much for your time and I'll be passing it on to Christina.
Right, and Christina is gonna speak a little bit about the upcoming Resident Association Board election.
Hi there, everyone. Name is Christina Heath, I'm with West Harlem, one of the second developers on the project. NITRA is planning, as you can see here, and you have, may have seen the notices around the campus. Uh, they're planning the next Resident Association Board election for Harlem River. Um, officers, um, to be elected are president, vice president, treasurer, recording secretary and corresponding secretary. Um, the requirements to seek office designated head of household, any age and other members of the household who are eighteen years or older, whose name appears on the lease and who are in good standing, they're in. The nomination date is Thursday, June thirtieth at six p.m. And, uh, the election day is Monday, August first, um, from three p.m. to seven p.m. NITRA dropped the flyer, as I mentioned, right, to all of the households, um, during which NITRA will over, NITRA dropped the flyer to households with time and location of the general election meeting during which NITRA will overview the election procedures, form a nominating committee and answer questions. The general meeting day is Tuesday, May thirty-first at six p.m. The general meeting location is the Resident Association Community Room at two ninety-one West one fifty-first Street between McCoons and Eighth Avenue. Next slide, is there another? And, Sam.
So, so.
Sorry.
So just a, uh, last quick mention of ways to reach us. Um, you can visit our website for announcements and updates as well as recordings of this and other and previous town hall meetings. Our website is www.harlemriver.org. You can also ask questions by emailing harlemriver@ccmanagers.com or visiting the management office. Um, we did get a question in the Q and A about late hours for the management office. So we do like our ma- our staff to be able to go home to their families and have dinner. Um, so we do not keep them in, in the office, um, at all hours of night. With that said, we are certainly available during business hours. And if you are unable to reach us, uh, if you don't have the opportunity to call us or stop in, um, um, due to your own work, um, during the day, please do reach out to us over email at any time and we will respond. Um, and try to figure out a time that we can contact you directly at a time that works for you. Um, so again, you can visit our management office, which most of you know, but is located at two thirty-one West one fifty-first Street. Uh, you can also call us at six four six four six one three zero zero seven. During business hours, the options are one for maintenance, two for leasing, rent payments and billing, three for temporary moves, four for social services, five for security. And then if you have any other questions that don't fall into one of those categories, you can press zero for an operator, uh, and we will direct your call accordingly. So we're now going to move to the Q and A, uh, portion of this, uh, this meeting. Um, just a quick, um, reminder about how the Q and A will work. You can, uh, type your question in the Q and A chat and we will, um, answer it out loud. Um, you can also raise your hand in Zoom. I know a few people, like belief, have actually already raised their hand, which is great, and we will get to those questions. Um, I will call on you during the, during the Q and A. Um, I'll ask you to unmute your microphone, uh, and then you can ask your question. Um, if you are using a smartphone, you can tap the screen of the Zoom meeting, a toolbar will appear and then tap participants and then raise hand. If you're using a computer, uh, please you move your mouse on the Zoom moving, on the Zoom meeting screen to reveal the toolbar. Click participants and click raise hand. And if you're calling into this meeting using a telephone, you can just dial star nine to raise your hand. So with that, um, why don't we start off with, uh, Misette Franklin? You should be able to unmute your mic.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Hi, Ms. Franklin.
Goodie, hi, how are you, sir? Goodie, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, thank you for holding this meeting. Um, I have two issues. One, the young lady that spoke about, um, paying your rent and the information about paying your rent. I need to speak to her, uh, personally, cause my question for her is personal.
Okay, great, yes. So, um, if you wanna, Priscilla works in our property, is our general manager and works in the property management office. So if you wanna stop by and have a conversation about rent, uh, please do stop by. You can also give us a call. Um, I'll actually move the slide screen so that our contact information is still up here if folks need it. Um, but Ms. Franklin, that's totally fine. Please feel free to stop by the office or, um, or, uh, contact us on, at this number.
Okay, uh, unfortunately something's wrong with my phone. Um, can you still hear me? Can you still hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, um, what was her name again?
Is this, is this Ms. Franklin?
Yes, this is Ms. Franklin.
Hi, Ms. Franklin, this is Priscilla. I'm going to send you an email with my contact info.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Um, uh, my other question is, uh, my concern is about, uh, this letter we received regarding, um, asking us to take our ACs, um, out the window when summer is starting and then clock keeping the windows closed for most part of the day. That is impossible when we're getting ninety-degree weather. We cannot live like that. And yeah, I, y'all need to come up with a different plan.
Yeah, thank you for this. This is definitely an issue that we've, we've gotten from, uh, uh, um, a comment we've gotten from residents. Uh, it's something that we're talking about internally. Um, I'm gonna pass it to Ellie in a second just to talk about why this is needed. Um, but what I wanna say first is we hear your concern. If there are specific accommodations we can make for you, and that can be, that can take many different forms, um, we can try to work with you directly. So Ms. Franklin and also anyone else that has this concern, please come to us, um, and tell us. And, and we can try to work out a way for, that this can work, um, that is minimally disruptive to you. I, I would say that construction work unfortunately is by nature very disruptive. Um, so there are some things that, you know, in order to fix something, it has, you know, there's, there are some boundaries that it's just sort of an uncomfortable process. And please know that we try to think about this at, sort of as much as possible, because this is your home. I mean, this is your home. So, uh, but again, this is, this is something that we've heard from residents. Um, so please do come to, talk to us about accommodations. Um, I know Priscilla is sending you her email, Ms. Franklin, um, or her contact information.
And I speak to her, I could speak to her about, um, accommodations as well.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
My rent.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, the other question is this, why didn't, why this, this work right here? Why didn't y'all wait till the wintertime when we're not gonna be using our ACs? And when our windows are closed all day?
Sure. Yeah, Ellie, can you? Yeah, thank you so much for the question. Ellie, can you talk a little bit about the construction schedule and this, this, just sort of the phasing of the construction work?
Sure, uh, first of all, it's just, it's nice to be part of a team where the residents' concerns are, are being addressed and listened to. Um, I've worked, uh, on other projects, not necessarily for, not really for this company, where, I mean, and you see masonry work throughout the city, uh, literally from downtown all the way uptown to the Bronx. Uh, the city has a very strict local law eleven requirement where if facade work isn't maintained, uh, in addition to unsafe conditions, uh, being created, which cause leaks and bricks, uh, potentially falling off of the buildings, there are violations, uh, it's, it's a very strict requirement, uh, which the develop, uh, the development has to, has to follow. So it's nice to hear that there are potentially gonna be accommodations, whether it's hospitality suites or meeting one-on-one with residents, uh, to provide some kind of alternative, um, for those who really, who really, really need it. Uh, the work has to take place now during the summer, primarily because during the winter, uh, the materials that we're using aren't rated for those temperatures. Um, you, you know, if you drive throughout the city, now's, now's go time. Uh, as soon as the rain, as soon as the rainy season stops, now's the time to be on the rigs to try and get this work done as quickly as possible. Um, it's invasive, uh, when the rigs go up and down the building, the idea, and again, I'm not, I, I hope I'm not in any way minimizing the impact. I, I get that, I've lived in apartment buildings where this is happening and it, it stinks. Um, so I'm not, I, I'm not trying to minimize in any way, but just to, if it helps, just to explain why we're doing it. So in order to facilitate, in order to accomplish the masonry work that we need to do, the brick replacement, uh, the spot pointing, uh, putting in new, new angles at, at some windows, et cetera. Uh, we have suspended, uh, suspended scaffolding rigs which will go up and down the face of the building. If there are any appearances or any air conditioner sticking out from the windows, two things potentially can happen. Uh, one, the rig can, can hit it and the air conditioner can go plummeting down to the ground. That's why we have sidewalk sheds, but, uh, you know, things, uh, bad things unfortunately can happen and I, I've, I've seen them, my colleagues have seen them where sidewalk sheds don't necessarily catch something like that, or more than likely, and this is actually, this actually has happened recently on another job site. There'll be workers on that sidewalk shed and they can be hit by any falling debris and, and really injured or, or god forbid worse. Uh, on the flip side of things, in addition to damaging an air conditioner, which at the end of the day, you know, can be, can be replaced, uh, the air conditioner can also fall into the apartment, uh, and that can hurt, you know, if there's a child there or if a resident is sitting on a couch near an air conditioner, it's, it's just, we're trying to avoid unsafe, uh, unsafe conditions. Um, and we understand that it's not, it's And we understand that it's not, it's also not safe to be in apartment when it's, when it's potentially boiling out and. We are trying to accomplish the scope as quickly as possible, take advantage of the of the good weather. And fortunately, to a large extent, the buildings, the facades are in are in good shape. So we should be able to do this scope quickly, and I think we will. We will work hard to, and the management company pushes us on this, you know, from the team at C and C. To let them know exactly what we're doing and how long it's gonna take. So when you see those rigs go up in front of your window. You should know how long they're gonna be there, and we will, we will do our best to communicate that to the management team and. And the development team so it can be communicated to to all the residents.
Okay, I completely understand. Thank you for explaining that. However. I'm pretty much sure I probably will be and probably maybe all others. Well, we need assistance in taking these A Cs out as well as replacing the window and putting them back in. Cause we're not gonna pay for somebody to take them out and then pay for somebody to put them back in. That's not an expense that 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 I'm pretty much sure nobody can handle or want to handle at this time.
And Ms. Franklin, you are not expected to handle that. We are on, we are on call to help you with that work, both to remove it. As well as to put it back in. So you're exactly right. We are, we are, we are, there is no expectation that you guys are going to be doing that yourself. If you need help. Please contact us and we will schedule time to first of all, as you said, have someone take it out safely and then also have someone put it back in.
Thank you. Have a nice.
Oops, I'm sorry. I pressed the mute button too quickly. Apo- apologies, Ms. Franklin. We're gonna. Uh, we're gonna move on to the next question. Let me just lower. Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Okay. So I see L G Q seven plus is the way that it appears on my screen. You should be able to to unmute. L G Q seven plus. I don't see a display name other than that. You should be able to unmute your mic now. Okay, I'll let, I'll. I'll keep that hand up and I'll circle back and I'm not sure if you're having technical issues. But if if we aren't able to connect with you on this this call, please do reach out to us. The the car contact details, you should be able to see them, and if you're looking at this presentation on paper. It's slide twenty five shows our contact details and then also. You can always just stop into the management office. So let's move on to Melanie Antwine. Apologies if I said your name wrong. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, how are you? Yes, it's Antoine.
Hi, Antoine. Hi, hi, Ms. Antoine. Very nice to meet you.
You too. I have a couple of questions. Just bear with me. I'll try to be quick. The first thing is cleaning inside the buildings. So, um, I don't know if, I know these concrete floors are kind of nasty and sometimes. It seems like they're clean and maybe you guys have cleaned them and they're not. I'm not sure. But they're pretty, you know, nasty and there were times I did call recently and the problem was rectified. But just I'm asking more for ongoing because when you guys, literally the second day that you guys took over. The floors were immaculate. People were really cleaning and it was very steady. It seems as though that has changed. But also not just the floors, but you know, there's still a lot of filth in the hallways. Like the compactors are not clean. There's still spider webs and dust on the windows, the compactors. Even when you mop the floors, I don't know what that's called, but just that side. Between like the the stair and the wall. Along the stairwell there, there's there's still dust and dirt. It's just gross. So I I would have hoped that that would have been something that was resolved, even I know there's new building going on. But there still needs to be cleaning done with the buildings that, you know, we, my building may not be, you know, reached until next year. So, um, you know, just that's that. So that's one thing.
Wait, so Ms. Antoine, Ms. Antoine, do you mind if we, I don't want to forget each question, so do you mind if we answer them one at a time? Is that all right? Okay, great. So first for cleaning, what I would say in general is that our staff is working extremely hard to keep this. This development clean. It's a big property and but we also have a a big and capable staff. So if there's something that was missed, it is certainly not willful. And we appreciate you bringing it up. The best way to bring it up, bring it to our attention specifically is by calling the office or visiting the office. It doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be taken care of like that. Because there are many other issues that we're also dealing with from maintenance to construct, I mean, all these different things, but. I don't want that to seem like we're just throwing it under the rug, right? This is. Again, I I say it over and over. This is where you, this community, you guys live. I mean, it's your home. So we want this to be a clean place and a place that feels comfortable. So for the cobwebs that you mentioned. It might be the baseboards that you mentioned on the.
Yes, the baseboards was the word I was looking for.
Sure, yeah. So please call, reach out to us directly. I don't, I typically don't like asking people exactly where they live on this phone call. Cause it's a very public call, obviously, and it's recorded, but if you'd like, you can please reach out to our office. Let us know, you know, an area that was missed and we'll make sure that to to try to get someone out to take care of that. Then the last thing I wanted to say about the floors is Ellie, can you speak a bit about? What we're gonna be doing to those concrete floors? Cause Ms. Antoine, that's not gonna stay like that, that. Kind of very old, very old. To some extent, it's gonna stay, but Ellie, would you talk a bit about the restoration of the floors in the stair hall that we're gonna be doing at the landings? And also the stairs?
Sure, and with this, just to clarify, sorry, are you talking about in the tower or one of the low-rise buildings?
No, the low-rise building. I'm in two ten in the corner.
Gotcha. So I mean, everything is going to be cleaned and and resurfaced and and painted. There are a couple of challenges or restrictions in in the low-rise buildings due to the fact that the buildings are are historic, they're landmarked. So we have to be careful that whatever we do, we stay within those parameters of. You know, main, kind of maintaining what's there. But we have a very clear direction that, you know, we have to. We basically have to restore everything to its best condition, whether it's cleaning the the existing glazed tile or addressing. There are some steps where the concrete is cracked or spalled, where they'll have to be, you know, demoed out and re-poured. As well as, you know, resurfacing and painting all of those, all of those steps. Handrails, the new lighting will go in, which, you know, in general, will do a tremendous amount to make the stairwells more welcoming. But that's certainly part of our, part of our scope.
Great. So that's the, just one, I just wanted to give you a a sense that it's not, it, of course, I mean, day to day cleaning, super important, and I'm glad you brought it up. And again, please do reach out to us with specifics. But I just wanted Ellie to give a sense for everyone that the surfaces themselves are also going to be rehabilitated. So I'm sorry, and you said you had more than one question, so.
No, that's okay. I I appreciate that, cause that is good information. Just just circling back really quick. I was told there was a a schedule of cleaning. Is that the case or not? Not really.
Priscilla, are you able to speak to the, I'm sorry, Priscilla Porter is the general manager. Are you able to speak to cleaning?
Yes, so the the perimeter and the and the garbage and compactors are cleaned every day inside. The buildings are cleaned every, the inside of the buildings are done every other day. And obviously, at at any, at any point, if you feel a building is not cleaned to a certain standard. You just call the office, the the maintenance line and just disclose that so that we can send one of the supers. To go and do a spot check on that building. It's not a problem.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm gonna move on just so I don't take too much time. One of the things that were brought up was about the. Construction and the shedding and you guys talked about that. And as a matter of fact, the very question I have. Is actually in the booklet on page fifteen. And just so you know exactly what I'm talking about, this picture helped me out greatly. Okay, so. Oh, I can see this better because it's in color. Okay. So, yes, so that red machine right there. Um, I live, if if I can say it's better, in that back corner, T ten S, in that. I call it now the hidden corner, the blocked corner. Because not only are we locked in on the side of that, the the north side tunnel. But we are blocked in by that gating right there. And one of my questions is that, I mean, first of all, you know, I and I think some people have already brought this up. That there, you know, we had, those of us who live in that little cubby area over there. The have a little concerns about safety, about EMS, fire access. That's one concern because we are so blocked in, just basic security in terms of, you know, any criminal activity. That that's just, you know, kind of an unsafe place to be. I understand the tunnel being blocked off, but here's my question. That machine is no longer there and it hasn't been there for about three weeks. So one of my questions is that gating is still there. And causing people, you know, our elderly, disabled people, which I am disabled, to walk all the way around. To get to where we need to go and there's no work being done right there of that, that there's no machinery there. And that was the reason we were told that 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 walkway was blocked. So I am wondering if, when that machinery is not there, can that walkway be open? So we have a better access, not only for emergencies, but just, you know, way of life to keep that a little bit open for us?
Ellie, I'm gonna, thank you for that question. Ellie, I'm gonna ask you to answer that. It might be something that you need to, we need to chat about, but I'll let you respond.
Right, I know. It's it's a good answer, and this is why these these calls are so helpful, you know, so we can. You know, new construction, we operate in a vacuum. We exist be, you know, beyond our construction fences. We, you know, we're not impacting for the most part any pedestrians or residents, but when we are working in your homes. We have to be as mindful as possible about the impact that we're we're creating. You're a hundred percent the Magni. The telescoping lift is no longer there. Next week, it's actually gonna be in the sunken playground in the. The foreground of this of this photo. I will talk to the team and see what we can do about opening up that area. Part of it is. You know, it costs, it it costs money to. Fence in these areas and we'd like to keep it in place for the duration of the construction work, because every time that we have a team come in and come out. There's the financial impact on a, on a. You know, there is a budget at the end of the day, and then it's also, what happens if for some reason we are doing work? And the safety measure isn't in place and we don't scramble quickly enough to get the construction team back in place to put it. To put it where we need it. So we try and leave things in a better safe than sorry situation, but I I hear you loud and clear. It's having a negative impact. On the access to your building. So let me look into that as as early as tomorrow. Bear with us, cause we're heading into the holiday weekend, but. I'll see what we can do. The other thing that I would just quickly mention is, I know that. Nasa, the the properties, the director of security has walked our construction team over there twice now. Requesting additional lighting in that in that corner and we are, we are working on it. We're. Sometimes we're 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 a little bit of a big ship, so it's tough to to turn us quickly. But we we actively have an electrician being engaged to start putting additional temp lighting. In that area and. I don't know that it did enough, because the security team is still asking for more lighting, clearly, but we did switch out all the bulbs. Within those sidewalk sheds for a brighter, a brighter LED bulb.
Right, I I appreciate your response and I I definitely understand. I I definitely understand. That point of view, but you know, yeah, so just whatever you you can do and just bring an awareness and seeing, you know, what can be done. So I appreciate that. My last question was somewhat brought up a little bit somewhere, and I think in the comments. But I just wanted more of a vocal response and and understanding on this. When our apartments are 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 completed, I guess. We have, a lot of people have the questions about the windows with the air conditioning and things like that. I have a question, a little more, want a little more understanding about the actual heating. The heating and air vents, because the the topic I came up in a discussion that they were like. Units, so they're almost similar to air conditioning units style kind of thing. And I remember it was said, I thought that people were using the term central air, so I wasn't quite sure about how that was going. To work. And of course, you know, now with the question about the air conditioners being removed and for, you know, for the, to do the the points and the brick. That that that's still a little bit of a question. So I hope I'm making sense there. How that process will be, how long we would have to wait for those windows to be done. So that, you know, that air and all that stuff will be like, so like, for example, when those people move in in a couple of weeks, so the new building. Are they gonna have that, those 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 items already in for them? Or are they still using the old system? So just more clarity on if my question makes sense.
Your question makes perfect sense. So I'm, I'll say, I'll, I'm gonna start an answer and then Ellie. I'm sorry, I'm making you talk a lot this time, Ellie, but Ellie is, I'm gonna have Ellie, the actual expert on this, answer your question in full. In general, Ms. Antoine, and also for everyone listening. If you have questions about the temporary move process and sort of what your experience will be, both leading up to, during. And then after the process. We distributed, I don't know, it must have been. Several months ago, we distributed a a very long guidebook. It was like a twenty five page guidebook to every household. It's called the Guide for Temporary Moves at Harlem River. And it essentially walks through everything we could possibly think of that a resident might have a question about, and I know, I know specifically that. The the, and I'm not expecting you to have read every single word of this, but just as a reference guide. There is a lot of information in there about what to expect, including with heating and cooling. With the temporary move process. So if you don't have that guidebook anymore, it's no problem at all. You can reach out to our our temporary move consultant. Or our, I'm sorry, temporary move team, and I'll put their information up right now. Sorry, let me just get to it. Here we go. So you can call six four six four six one three zero zero seven and press option three. To reach our temporary move team and they will be able to print you and and provide you an additional guide. So that's what I wanted to say at first. In terms of your actual experience with heating and cooling, Ellie, would you please? Provide Ms. Antoine and everyone a little bit of an explanation of what is the actual? Kind of, what is the machine, what do the machines look like? How are they different from what is currently in the units? And when, and when can people expect to actually have them go in?
Sure. How much time do you have? Just kidding. Quick, quick, quick into the points. It's a, it's a great, it's a great question. So first of all, when residents right now are moving back into two eleven J to their their completed apartments. They will be returning to the same steam heat and the same existing windows. So if someone had an air conditioner. The management company and and the moving specialists are moving their air conditioner back into the renovated unit. And it's basically in terms of the windows and the heating, it's the same conditions that are currently on site. We are in the process of ordering the new systems and I would say within the next six months or so. We'll start to be able to install them. So residents going under renovations at that point. Will kind of be at that sweet spot of being able to have all of the work being done in their units. At the same time and and the same thing goes for the windows. Unfortunately, these are long lead time items and in the current conditions of the world, we all, we all know about this. It's just harder to come by things. You cannot get things as quickly as you used to. So what what are we putting in the in the apartments? This is, this is actually pretty exciting and and maybe we can. Follow up by the construction team can provide a little flyer for residents with a little explanation. We can, we can definitely do. Do more as to explain it, but in in brief, you're getting, you're getting heat pumps and the heat pump is. I was gonna hold up my hands for a size, but that's really not gonna accomplish anything. The best example actually is if you go into the model apartment, there is a wall mounted unit there right now. If you, it's almost like having an air conditioner, although it's a little slimmer. Attached to your wall and there'll be one attached to essentially every room in your apartment. And through a control on this, on this machine, on this, what's called a fan coil unit. You'll be able to get heating and cooling. It's similar to central air. Central air just provides cooling. This provides heating and cooling. It's got a lot of names, a heat pump, a ductless split system. But basically, it's allowing us to go off of the centralized steam plant. You'll be able to regulate either the heating or the cooling, depending on the season and the temperature outside. From within your, within your own apartment. There'll be condensers on the on the roof and these units will be in your, on every wall in your apartment.
And and sorry, Ellie, it's not every wall in their apartment. It's on one wall in every room. Is that right?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you for clarifying. Yes.
Including the bathroom and the kitchen?
Not the, not the bathroom.
Okay.
So to recap, um, what, as of right now, the folks that are currently moving. Or that are in the, are actually in temporary units right now, when they come back to their apartments, the two eleven J um line. When they come back to their apartments, the heating and cooling will be the same as what they, when they left, as well as the windows. So our, the the temporary move specialist will be. Providing to uh it's support to them to reinstall their air conditioners and to make sure that, you know, it's what they expected. Once these materials come in, what we've, they're being ordered and they're they're being purchased and once they come in. We will schedule time to go back to these apartments and and install these additional upgrades. And I want to be very clear. These additional upgrades will not require an additional move. It it is a few days of work and it will not require the resident to move out of their unit again. It can be done while they are in place. And we will work with them directly to make sure that we're doing it at a time that's convenient for them.
Thank you so much for the detailed explanation. I I appreciate.
No problem. Okay, um, let us. Move on, so um. Let's see if there's any questions from the uh Spanish line. And I'm sorry, I actually should have started with by introducing, we have Spanish and and Chinese translation ongoing and I did not introduce them in the beginning of this meeting, so. Apologies for forgetting to do that. Um, but can the Spanish, is there, are there any questions on the Spanish line?
No one has their hand raised right now, Sam.
Great, thank you so much and I.
Nothing on the Mandarin line right now either, but I'll let you know for.
Great, okay, thank you so much. And then let me just take a quick scan of the. Um, chat. Okay, so I just want to answer, I I've seen that, I've seen that there are a few um questions about security. Um, and sort of what to expect with security, so I just want to let everyone know. Um, and if there are specific questions, please raise your hand and we'll try to answer them. We have our security team on the, excuse me, on the line. Um, by the end of construction. We will have installed a very large number of security cameras around the development. Which will be monitored centrally in our security office at the development. Um, as of right now, there are not cameras yet. Um, it is part of the construction, but they have not been installed yet. But we do have at least one security staff on site at all hours of the day. Um, and we are also providing additional security at um the entrance to buildings that are currently being renovated. Um, so there is a security presence on site twenty-four hours a day. Um, we know that there. There have been and will continue to be security issues in the surrounding community. It's sort of just the reality of the world. Um, and just for clarity, the security staff is not the same as the police. Um, we are there to monitor. To field questions and field concerns and to coordinate with the police if needed. Um, but we are there, we are there as a resource for residents, um, and we will continue to be there. Um. Priscilla, could you also share an update, just briefly, on the status of checking all of the door locks, including at twenty-eight fifty?
Sure, I I actually was just um speaking with Will, our assistant general manager, who was in a process of emailing. The team this update. He has um. Our, one of our vendors, Webster Lock uh coming on site tomorrow. Um, to work on the hinge and the uh secure tech lock that needs to be. Installed to secure the door. So from the update that Will has received from Webster Lock. They're going to be on site tomorrow morning to finish with the lock. Um, and it's going to. Take about, it's a job that's gonna take about four hours, but from what they. They're explaining, they foresee it to be fixed as of tomorrow.
And this is the lock at which, which door?
Excuse me, twenty-eight fifty.
Great. So we know that there, this has been an issue for quite a while. Um, it is a custom door and a custom lock. Um, so we are working on it. Um, and as Priscilla said, there will be a vendor on site tomorrow to take care of that. Uh, that door lock. And then Priscilla, can you just talk through for a second, kind of how we. Have, you know, think about and address other door locks around the the development?
It's, it's, Priscilla, I'm sorry, I just want to jump in real quick, Sam.
Please, Adam.
Move on. I just want to, how you guys doing? Thank you tonight for joining us. Um, I'm Adam Crone, M C P Management. I just wanted you to know about the, on the process going on at twenty-eight fifty.
Great.
We need you guys help. You know, we fix the door locks when we first came on site. And you know, constantly um residents or other people, guests. They continue to break the door locks. So if you guys can call that maintenance number. That maintenance number that you have that's after hours. That's also used for anonymous tips. So if you see somebody doing something, smoking. Um, bringing their friends in the building, breaking the locks, doing whatever they could do, you can call that number. And leave a message and remain anonymous. And give that to us. And we get that, we get that, that's twenty-four seven. We get that and we can address that. But. We need your help to help us to keep the doors secure. Because, you know, we fix the doors, the doors get broke, fix the door, the doors get. Propped in with with rocks and things like that, so I'm, there's. There are seventy-nine people on this call. And seventy-nine people know at least one person, and that's going to double the number and they know somebody else. So if you can. Convey that message out. We need your help to help us to help you. And that's all I wanted to add on to that piece. We're gonna fix the door locks, of course, but we need you. If you guys see something. You gotta say something. You gotta let us know. If you see little Johnny. And his, his, his guys doing whatever, you gotta let us know. That's all I'm gonna add to it.
Thank you, Adam. And this number that you're seeing on your screen, six four six four six one three three zero zero seven. Is uh the same, it's the same number during business hours and after business hours, it's the same number to call. Um, so please do that. And Priscilla, you were just finishing up about um checking the other door locks.
Right, so, so our team had, has um done a completion of all, all doors that are. Uh, currently um. Currently working and locked uh as, with the exception of twenty-eight fifty. Um. We were made aware by a staff member of twenty-six uh forty-one that had a situation with the front door. Um, not working and our team, maintenance team was able to address, but. As Adam made a very good point. We'll make a round and check off every single door and have it marked off. Unfortunately. A situation occurs and then we're back to square one on a certain section. And so um. You know, it it is very important. Um, piggybacking what Adams is saying for various reasons that um we work as a team. Um, to keep each other in the loop. We have various uh staff on site. And we all speak with each other to to ensure that we give each other the heads up. And um, address when we are. Aware of a front door and just in general, any door that's within the building. That is not working so that we can address right away. Uh, do understand that um some repairs. Take longer, will take a longer than other because these are custom doors and so it can be a repair that is done. Uh, immediately and some require parts and things of that nature, so it it can be a longer. Um, scenario. Either way, will be addressed and we'll figure out solutions. Um, and get the right team. If not, if not the maintenance staff on site will bring in the proper vendors to address. Um, and ensure that doors are self-closing and doors are secured and 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 things of that nature, mechanisms are in place. Um, but we do need our, our residents and our staff to work uh hand in hand together. But we do have the entire um team quarters, uh handy persons and. Uh, management alike, uh, checking all buildings and doors from, from the roofs on down to the basement to ensure doors are closing.
Thanks, Priscilla. I want to move on to another question. Um, so we see, I have a hand raised. Um. One, six, four, six, seven, two, four, four, two, zero, eight. Um, you should be able to unmute.
Hello?
Hello, how are you today?
So I know you said they started with two eleven J. When the, when are they gonna do two eleven A?
Thank you so much for the question. So the, the comprehensive schedule for um for temporary moves, we don't have a. A start to finish schedule for every building. Because the best way to make sure that you don't hit the schedule that you want to hit is to set it up really far in advance. So we basically are scheduling the, each stair hall. Um, approximately three at a time, so you'll know. Usually around sixty days before your stair hall is going to get renovated. You'll know, you'll receive a notice from us. You'll also receive a phone call directly from. The uh, the temporary move specialists who will set up an interview with you. Um, they'll. They'll answer all your questions. There'll be an open line of communication. They'll provide packing materials. So to answer your question directly is, I don't have the answer to that question. Um, as of right now, um, two eleven J is in the process, um, and then we're moving forward, but as soon as we, as soon as we know. When each stair hall is renov, is being renovated in the schedule, um, which is made, you know, a few, several months in advance, we will reach out to you and let you know so you have a lot of advance notice.
So let me ask you this, why did they start with that building first?
That's a good question. Ellie, do you have a a sense of why building three was cho, I mean. Point being, we have to start somewhere and I I'm not sure if there was a specific reason for that billing. Ellie, do you want to talk through that?
Uh, yeah, I I I don't have the most intelligent answer for you. Part of it is just the proximity to our field office and where our. Where our main uh contractor has their uh staging area. Uh, it was also due to some of the test results that we got in that building. We got their test results slightly earlier than some of the other buildings, so. A a lot of it was happenstance. What we are getting, uh, you know, as we get. More boots on the ground and more comfortable with the way that we're executing this uh, this scope. Um, we are taking into account feedback from, you know, residents. We're not getting this feedback directly. We're getting it from the management company and and the developer. Uh, you know, recognizing that, you know, a lot of people have different schedules. They want their work to be done at a certain time and we're. Trying to have that influence the schedule as much as possible, but but some of this is just gonna happen in a linear fashion. Um, and to Sam's point, I know that we haven't released a ton of information on the schedule right now. But we are going to reach a point where there's a lot more uh. Uh, that we can predict and go well out into the future, letting residents know. Uh, well, well, well in advance of when the work is going to be taking place. And hopefully, we're going to continue to be able to improve upon that schedule. Uh, we certainly want to manage expectations and not, I never want to be in the position where I'm telling your management team or. Or uh Sam and his team that we're going to be done by X date. And they go ahead and schedule moves and people work their lives around this incredibly invasive process. And then we don't show up. So you know, that that's really what's, what's uh steering all of this right now.
Thank you so much for the question. Um. I'm gonna move on to um. Lavinia Gibson, um, you should be able to. Uh, actually, I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of difficulty here. Let's see if I can do. Sorry, there's just a technical difficulty on this. Lavinia, I promoted you, I changed your permissions to panelist because that was. My screen was telling me I needed to do that to unmute you. Are you able to unmute your microphone now? Ms. Gibson, are you able to unmute? Okay, I'm not sure if you can hear me, but I'll just, I'll, I'll try to circle back. Um, we only have about seven more minutes, but. Again, if you have questions that we don't, didn't get to, please reach out to us.
Hello?
Oh, hi, Ms. Gibson. How are you?
Yes, my question was the same as before, as far as the um air conditioning. That someone would, oh, we're gonna have someone to come in and take it out as well as putting it back. Well. Okay, now the work that has to be done, is it gonna be on a every day? How do you say it? Before, if they take it out that morning or whatever. Before they leave to go home, are they gonna put the air conditioner back into the window?
Thank you so much for that question. Um, Ellie or Priscilla, are you able to answer this right now?
Yeah, the 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 quick answer is no.
Okay, so the quick answer is no. So what I'm, I'm, we're hearing a lot.
So how are you gonna have, what's gonna be in the window during that time that the air conditioner is out?
Right, so we're, we're actually, we were just discussing this today with the management team. We're figuring out. The best option. There are a couple of different products. Uh, whether it was Plexiglas, I don't want to go into too many details, but we have to find something. Uh, the, the main uh focus is something which is safe. Um, if there are children in the apartment, uh, if people are concerned about security from outside, the safest product which can be secured. In an efficient way, uh, and still allow for removal when the work is completed, so your air conditioner can be reinstalled. So that's, that's still being determined.
Okay, but we'll know in advance before they take it out. Is that what you're saying also?
Yes, uh, absolutely, absolutely.
All right.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gibson. Okay. Um, let me. Move on to another question. Um, do we have any questions from the um? Excuse me, just had something stuck in my throat. Do you have any questions? Uh, are there any questions from the Spanish or Mandarin lines? Cara, do we have any questions from the Mandarin or Spanish lines?
All right, um, no, no questions at this time.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, I see another question from the number ending in four, two, zero, eight. You should be able to unmute and ask your question.
So if I wanted to buy paint, would they be able to use my paint to paint or no?
That is a great, that is a great question. So um, the short answer is no. Um, we have a very. Comprehensive scope of work that we're planning at this development. And one thing that, we get this question a lot from residents. One thing that we want to communicate is that. Not only are we preparing to renovate your apartment, we are also preparing to be able to do maintenance on your apartment. This is not a one-off, you know, we're. Doing a new coat of everything on your apartment and then we're leaving. This is a long term, we're managing this property, maintaining the property. So we need to make sure that we have a product that is durable. That we can purchase in large quantities and that we can get a hold of quickly. So we can't take requests from, but you know, there are six hundred and ninety apartments. If we were gonna take requests from six hundred and ninety apartments. Then we would need to keep six hundred and ninety types of paint on the development in case there's. God forbid, some terrible situation and there's some, a lot of paint that would be needed. So. In general, the, the inside of the apartment is going to be painted. Um, you know, according to the, the, the plan. And again, if you're, if you are curious, anyone, including um this, this caller, and again, thank you for the question. If you're curious about what the plan is for it to look like. Um, we, we do have the model apartment that is available for viewing. Um, please contact our temporary move um team. At the number on your screen if you'd like to set up a time to look at it. Um, but in short, we're not able to accommodate requests like that because it would make maintenance, long-term maintenance. Um, very, it basically impossible for us to be able to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the question. Um, so we only have two more minutes and I know that um. Uh, Donald noticed from West Harlem is gonna give us a bit of a sign off. So why don't we take one more question? I see. Um, Angela, are you able to unmute your mic? You should be able to. Angela, can you hear us? Angela, can you hear us? Going once, going twice? Okay, um, we tried one other, um. I don't know if we, uh, Ms. Taylor, Tracy Taylor, you should be able to unmute. Can you hear me?
Hello?
Hi, Ms. Taylor. I can hear you.
Hi, um, a question. I just want to piggyback off of the painting. Um.
Yes.
It's actually two questions if possible. So therefore we can't. Say you do your painting and we can't paint our own apartments?
So that I think.
And have paint on hand in case maintenance has to be done? Later on down the line?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, Priscilla, do you, do you know the answer to that question, what, what the terms of the lease are um with respect to? I I believe tenants can paint their own apartment as long as when they. They, if you ever decide to move, I think that the requirement would be.
It's, it's restored to its original, right, and that's.
Pretty, I'm pretty sure.
We were under previously.
It's so, i- if that was the terms of the lease before, the lease didn't change with, in that respect, so that is very likely still the case, but Priscilla. Do you know, are you able to confirm that?
That is the case.
Great, so Ms. Taylor, that is correct. If you would like to paint your own. Great. So Ms. Taylor, that is correct. If you would like to paint your own apartment, um, you're free to do that. Um, and um. Just if, a- again, as I said, if you, we hope you don't, we hope you choose not to leave, but if you ever decide that you want to, that you're moving, then. You would just, the term of the lease is just that you would need to, to paint it, um, to return it to its original color.
Okay, um, I'm gonna have a private meeting in regards to the AC removal, but I wanted, I wanted to ask too, it's because. Um, you know, you have seniors going forward, it's going to be ninety degrees, ninety-five, and you have tenants that have pets. That should not be. You know, left in an apartment with windows closed for. You know, a enormous amount of time and those things, are they being considered? Were they considered? Not let alone a person that might have health issues. As per.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was, I was cutting you off. I'm sorry. Oh, oh, um, so the, the, the short answer to your question is yes, it was certainly considered. It is, it is always considered on an ongoing basis. It's sort of as Ellie spoke about, part of the, part of the issue. So let me take a step back. The first point is if there is a, an accommodation that a tenant needs, please come talk to us. I know that uh, Ms. uh, Ms. Taylor, you and I were communicating in the chat. And I encouraged, and I encouraged you to reach out directly um, to our property management team. So that's first of all, if there is an out, an, an outstanding issue that you would like to bring to our attention and you need some sort of accommodation. Please bring it to us so that we can try to help you solve it. So that's number one.
Yeah, I will be, I'm scheduling sometime next week. And also, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I- i- in general, what I would say is. As Ellie noted, there are, there are limitations with respect to construction of what we can do in cold weather months, both because. Materials need to be kept at a certain temperature and all, in order for us to install them and also because of weather. So let's say we were planning on doing this in the winter. When no one has their AC unit in, and then there's multiple snowstorms over a period of months.
No, that I, I understand. I mean, that's if we were in the winter. We're not into, in the winter now. So we have to address the elephant. Elephant in the room now, um, because we are approaching ninety degree weather. It's like, so we can, I, Priscilla, I know that's true. I'm not going to elaborate anymore. We will need some time next week.
Yes, I'll be back, I'll be back. I'll be, I'll be back in the office on, on Tuesday and I'll call you directly and we'll meet in person. Don't worry about it.
We'll schedule, yeah, you have to schedule a time because I work.
I know that. We're gonna go on your schedule.
Okay, I appreciate it. Always. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Appreciate the question. Um, okay, so we're. Thank you. We are, we are um, actually just a bit overtime. Um, so thank you so much to everyone. Um. It's, we learn a lot from this. This is not just for us to share information for, for, to you. It's for us to understand your priorities and. How the project impacts you and for us to try our best to try to, you know, address those issues. So thank you for being here. Um, we will have, we'll continue to have these meetings. Um, every time we do them, we'll, you know, of course, drop off the notice, drop off the presentation at your door. Um, and we'll continue to do the construction, um, the, I'm sorry, the construction newsletters, um, once, approximately once every month, once every six weeks. Um, I'm going to pass it over to Donald Notice, um, uh, the executive director of West Harlem Group Assistance, which is. One of the lead developer, the, one of the developers on this project, um, to give us a sign off. But for me. Um, thank you sincerely for being here and I hope everyone has a safe um, and enjoyable Memorial Day weekend. Donald.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Um, on behalf of the, um, all of our partners. I just want to um, let the residents know that we're committed and making this um, project a success. And you can. See from the presentation and this quarterly um, town hall meeting that we continue to have, I think. Sam echoed it, you know, we're here to answer all your questions and we'll get the questions answered, you know, answered to you. This is a tedious process and it's, it's about communication and engagement. And we're here to communicate and engage for twenty eight fifty, the residence, um. Special meeting that we're going to have, we, we, we wanted to have that meeting so we can, you know, get to. Have an elaborate discussion with you ab- about your building. We'll con, we'll continue to have these. Quarterly meetings and, and attendance, as Sam mentioned also, that y'all had great questions. And the questions will, you know, either be handled at the town hall or they will, you know, get answers to you as Priscilla. Was saying throughout the whole presentation, call me or I'll send you an email. So it's all about the communication. Um. We, we hear what you're saying. There was, I think, the tenant engagement team, um. Jerome Dunbar and Christina Heath has been doing an awesome job on being on the site. And they get to hear a lot of things. They bring it back to management and, and the um, and developers. And we, and we get things done as it relates to them. Excuse me, as it relates to more temporary lighting on the site for security issues or temporary um, cameras or, or you know, there was um. Um, complaints about the um, the hot place at twenty eight um, fifty. So all of those issues were dealt with. And they was handled. So to the residents of Harlem River, thank you. You had great questions. Enjoy the holiday weekend and we'll, and we'll hear from you next quarter. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone. Have a great one. Be safe.